Good morning, everybody. It's a little past ten. We have called a special call maybe to matter of big addresses in county budget processing, something that's pretty normal that we do every year. So we'll call our maybe order roll call, our call is out, Roger Heel is out, Mr. Hendricks.
Yeah.
And Mr. Owen.
Yeah.
We do have a quorum. I don't think we're going to vote on anything. I think we're just going to be able to go with the votes. And I'm trying to set it up in fifteen minute increments. I know that some may take longer than fifteen minutes and some should take less. So I wanted to put Ms. Fuller in the hot seat first.
Oh, yes.
She's my neighbor and that's...
You think so much for me, right?
Come ahead, Ms. Fuller. And we're just going to have a situation where you talk about budget and everybody just asks questions.
Well, you all have the budget confronted, you're right?
Yeah.
Okay. So which one do you want to start with? I've got mapping operations and then I have my salary budget.
What page is your budget first?
I have no clue. Property appraisal, fourteen. Fourteen. So the appraisal budget.
All right.
Two minutes. Basically, a few lines have gone up. Not anything, I don't think, major at this point. We have changed a few lines, trying to see. The, I don't know if y'all know this, but I am on the Alabama Association of Tax Administrators Executive Board, plus I'm the secretary. So I'll have four years in which that process goes through for the Alabama Association of Tax Administrators. And so the traveling costs did go up somewhere. So you're going to see that I have asked for more travel because I have to be at those functions. Whereas in the past, I've chosen to, you know, go to winter conferences or summer conferences. I have to go to all those meetings in the twentys.
Really, what I'm seeing is your biggest increase is because of salary.
Yes, in the salaries budget. I had no control. If y'all pass that, it's a loss. Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
I think the biggest thing that we took away is not is anything to make sure that we come together. We're an administrator for this year, working on our first budget, just to make sure if she has anything that we know that we could help, what we look at. And like I always tell her, her best asset is that her department has.
Yeah. And I make myself available.
Yeah, she does. She says.
Yeah. I understand. Mine is the most confusing budget of them all because most of the budgets that will be proposed to you today come from your general budget, your general funds budget. Mine comes from all the agencies I collect for. So instead of the county commission general fund being 100% the person paying for those, we have the roads and bridges, we have the fire departments, we have the school boards, we have the state of Alabama taking a portion of that. We also have municipalities that pay a portion of these budgets. So mine is unique in that fact. It's also unique in the fact that whatever is approved in September for October 1, I don't get to change that. So it's not like I'm going to come back to the county commission and beg for, you know, an increase in money. We just have to work within the budget. Y'all passed the salaries budget for April of this year, and I'm just having to watch those lines pretty carefully and move things to it and hold off purchasing things. Instead of purchasing new computers this past year that were six years old, I instead, because the computer system itself seemed to be, the computers, the hardware seemed to be working pretty good, we just upgraded the hard drives in them. And so instead of it being $3,000 a computer, it cost me $120, I think, a computer. So we did four of those this year within the budget. So that was able, I was able to manipulate some monies for places.
I've said something here. You've always worked your budget. I've never seen you come up with over.
No. Last year I was real close. Like last year, I was, you know, nail biting a little bit last year. But things have gone up so tremendously as far as supplies, and y'all know that. I mean, you're seeing it as well. So as far as that budget goes, the biggest, I guess the biggest amounts were just in salaries. But I think I tried to adjust some of the things down so that it wouldn't be such a big hit in some of the other ones.
Well, I can say you did a lot of talking. Okay, you went up in travel and you went up in salaries. Nearly seventeen thousand dollars, which was us doing that. So your budget is relatively flat. The only question I got is the aerial photography.
The aerial photography is gone as far as the cost of having it done this year. I think the last two, we had them fly the downtown city of Heflin area. I don't know if y'all were aware of this, but y'all passed that last year in last year's budget. So we flew the downtown of Heflin. And then we took the scale that the state of Alabama flew for January of '21 that still was a 10-year up in aerial photography. And we have increased the scale. So some of those scales that we're fixing to see in the county, you're going to see it a lot closer scale than prior. Before they were at a 400 scale and now we're back to a 200 scale everywhere. So...
So we need to take that $46,000 out of this year's budget?
Okay, so the aerial photography should not be in this year's budget at all.
That's, strike that. That's what I was going to ask.
Aerial photography under the requested, yeah.
What page is on that?
It is on, I don't know what page y'all got. I'm sorry.
About halfway down.
I didn't think that I left that in there, but obviously.
So if you add in the seventeen thousand that your pay went up, your people's pay, and it looks like you added about $5,000 for travel, I mean, you're good as far as that's going.
Yeah, I added about $2,500 in the travel side, so yes.
About $2,500 on that.
Yeah, on top of that, yes. That's right. That's right.
And I will just to say, a little trip, I have taken it off on the new version that I've started working on, the second version, because I actually didn't see, somehow I didn't get all of your numbers put in exactly. So I thought that some of these items did have a little bit of an increase over what you're looking at. And most of it was, or there was some training and educational that went up.
Yes.
And it actually, she has it, her request for that is $2,200. That's line 170. And then she had $171 to actually...
So it's only $1,150?
It was only $750 when we were...
Okay, you got to write it in your mind. It's pretty easy to say.
I don't think this is one of some of my line items, but I mean, we'll...
And I corrected things after I brought up that I had somehow made the changes one of the past section.
On 170, I've got $750, $750 on training and education charges. How much is it?
What line again?
170, right?
170. She actually has $2,200 on that.
Okay, so it's not $750, it's $2,200?
$2,200. And then the next line, which is membership fees, she's got $1,500. She did take the...
I didn't copy of that. Mine ain't over here.
Mine, yeah.
Let me give you a copy of this.
Well, I didn't even wear any of the same sheet here.
Yeah. And I let it alone because that's the original one that I can send out to you. But you were missing a copy of this.
Can you go ahead and take the aerial, the $46,000?
Yeah, I've got that off in there already. Because she did take it off. I just missed it. One of the sign have it the same.
That's why, when you said that, I'm like, what part is that? Home number four? I'm sorry.
Even with all the changes, what's her final number is 279-660-45. Okay, for this year, that's what she's requesting, which is different than what you're showing right there.
So let me ask you one more question. So last year, yours was $750? Travel and education?
The education part, exactly.
Did you set that?
We're going to get her new...
Yeah, because y'all, you know, y'all restricted just me and Melinda, the certified people, from going training. I kept training anybody else in my office unless I taken out my discretion.
Yes, still in the budget, which we, I don't want to take that. I don't want to.
Take what?
Take out the travel experience.
I would like to see that happen because I have, I have a young lady that is trying it in the mapping side. And I don't know if y'all know this, but Melinda Daniel has been here with us for forty, forty some odd years. And she said on occasion, "I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking about it." And she's never even said that up until this year, because she's doing it. And we've got a girl that, before y'all restricted travel, had taken a good portion of the mapping classes. And I can't...
So that would get her her certification?
We're working toward her certification.
Can we, can we put something, I'd like to, because I talked with Melinda too, if we can look at that.
Well, tell me.
Add that, get that to her?
Yes, I'll get those figures.
You have to amend this.
There's only so many classes.
That's what I'm saying.
There's only so many classes they offer in a year and they do it, they do it kind. Like this class may be offered this year and then it may not be offered for another two years. So there's some offset that's...
Okay, yeah. Because you missed a class, you got a whole nother get...
You got a whole nother get.
What we're talking about is on the classes, she's got a lady that's going to get certified in mapping. And so she's going to give you a amendment to our notes in the back and you just add that, add that class into the notes.
Yes. We've been trying at Ross time, some of those that had worked on the way out. Pretty much though, in my office, everybody's fairly, fairly young in that.
And they might have to go out there on the street and hire somebody to do it.
You cannot. You cannot. If you get somebody with a GIS degree, you go pay a lot more than that.
Or they're going to be, they're going to be at your office.
They're not going to work with us. That's right, yeah.
And then how long?
They're going to go to work with a government agency, maybe, you know, a few times.
So the two things that we're talking about, and Joyce is right on that, that make changes to that class, to get that lady certified. She's going to put it, she'll...
I'll work on those numbers and see what it's going to be because that'll also change the travel. If it's out of, if it's out of distance, that she can't drive every day, there's going to be, you know, hotel expense. So I'll have to work through that.
And I guess, you know, you got the line out of 170 that we're getting it straightened out.
Yes, yes, I've got that file out of this.
And the $46,000 for the mapping, you got that straightened out. So as we go on down...
I think that, did the 235 line go up on the one that I sent to you? It did. Because one of those companies went up on us. In fact, I think maybe a total of three, but I had those broken down, but I didn't bring that because I thought you all had it, I'm sure.
So we're talking on the line 135 to $2,500 and $8,000? Is that the one you're going to have?
Um...
135, 235?
235.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I think it's like $83,000 or $84,000.
$83,000, that's on your new page that I was giving you.
Yes.
Oh, I got a new...
Did you give me that?
Oh, yeah, that's how you do it. So now we're going to this, oh, this is just for yours, right?
This is the one that you said in the conversation.
Here we go.
Yeah, I was wrong. Okay, so, yeah, good, 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 good. Thank you.
Okay, so we're coming down to, we've come down, we'll come down, we're probably going to start, go back up on that. So we'll probably be about 182.
Yeah, there's going to be some, yeah, there's going to be in that 200 range probably, yeah.
Okay. It's the, I'm 235.
235, yeah, that one went up. That's the mapping agreements we have with our camera systems, our IT people, our, you know, those...
The twenty, what my question is, we've got what was approved at 22 is flat to the next, no, it's only gone up $100.
Okay.
Hundred and thirty dollars, I guess. You've gone up to $20,634.
What, $100 more?
235.
Oh, you're on the other budget. You're on, you're on mapping, I mean, you're on operations. Excuse me, yes. Yes, that one only went up a few dollars. That's correct.
And other one up for a thousand?
That's correct. That's correct. Because the appraising software is what is on the mapping and appraisal side. They allow us to break that up. The state does not want the collection side on the appraisal and mapping budget. So I've had to separate that in the last four or five years. And that's why you're seeing, we really stay flat on the collection side and not a whole lot of changes to the collection side. But the mapping and appraisal, when they get the latest and greatest, newest, whatever gadgets, that software, when they update it, does, it affects us as far as that yearly mapping experience. And I don't know if y'all know this, but, you know, we have, we have an iPad that we use out in the field so there's not any coming back in and duplicating work. It's just that blood star system. It's really, it's like having another person working for us out there in the field.
So basically, your budget is going, you're asking for $30,000?
Yeah, and I think that we're looking at somewhere around a $200,000 increase to just the general budget this year in collections. Somewhere in that neighborhood.
How much grew up?
I think about $200,000 in general, in the general funds budget. I'm guessing at that, but I'm, overall, we're looking at over half a million increase from last year to this year in collections, total collections. Something you may not also know that...
We don't get a percentage of that, right?
That's, that's right. You get a percentage of that. You get five meals of that, whatever that $500,000 is. I think we got projected in the abstracts for the county commission, $720,316. And that does not include the assessor collector's fees, which are usually right at $170, $160, $175,000. And I'm going to give you a little backdrop on that assessor collector's fee. In the day, those fees were used to pay the tax collector and the tax assessor. Now that, back some years ago, they combined those two jobs in Cleveland County to one as revenue commissioner. And when that happened, they also changed the retirement system for Cleveland County to the state retirement system. So the assessor collector's fees goes to the general funds. But in the past, that would have been your assessor and collector's tax, their pay. If that makes any sense.
Okay, so you're, you're projected that our, our portion of your money is going to be around $100,000?
Uh-huh.
$720 on, there are two separate lines, okay? The 41110, which is a revenue code, that's for property tax for general purposes, is the $720 that she mentioned that we're on her act earlier. And then you have line 45235, that's for...
What page is that on?
Page one.
Okay.
Revenue...
45 what?
45235 is your, the part that she's talking about, that's assessment and collection fees, which is, I've got, put as $184 this year because that looked like that's about... That's actually what we're collecting for this year. So if it'd be anything, it should be higher, but...
Right. If we're collecting on more property than that, that amount doesn't... It's a, it's a moving scale when you're talking about property valuations. And so I couldn't just say, hey, this is how much it's going to be after. The first $10,000, that scale changes. And so it keeps changing over, you have to read the code and be like, "Come here, you're going to know it all, won't you kill me?" I'm like, "Why are you telling me this?"
Your first line on your property tax, that was, that was set in stone because it's what was collected on, it's collecting...
Token dollars. That's right.
But she knows how that's...
So you're talking about the first line, that's the cost?
Yes.
Well, you've got this like number D configured in here.
I've got just $720 for the first line.
But that was, you're talking about the inquiries that's being collected for...
Starting October, October 1.
So then we're just start next year? No, we're not, and inquiries won't be until next year. She'll get it.
And isn't that great that I'm making that? I'm collecting in the rear states.
Oh, yeah. But the money we got by now, some money we'll just collect.
Yeah. I'm putting it in the budget. I want future money.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're talking about 23, the...
So this year, so 23, we'll still get another hundred for the cameras.
That's right. Yeah, the county gets all of that assessor collector's fees.
Okay.
Well, because y'all pay my salary. But then y'all only pay a portion of my salary. All the other agencies pay a part. Y'all get, y'all are the lucky ones. On that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so there, so let me ask you on that salary.
Okay.
So on your salary, it's going to $106,000?
That, I think that, while I was proposing, it's a...
She just requested.
It's a request, and I think that that'd actually have to be, and I just really wanted to talk to you about it.
Right.
And the reason being is that, well, of course, y'all know that unless y'all give everybody across the board a pay raise, this old guy will get one. So I'm working this, this year will be the fifth year without any raise. And I know y'all all feel it too in your paychecks that, you know, your money is not going near as far as it was before. And so my proposal was based on really the surrounding counties. I went ahead and did kind of what the group did for the employees. And I went to those surrounding groups and got their salaries. And kind of did a pay scale study myself. Now, some, some counties pay based on the probate judges pay. Some of them make 80% or 85% of whatever the probate judge, and that's how they set the revenue commissioners pay. Some of them are just salary based pays. And so I did all of that and took an average. If you gave me $50 a month, I would be appreciative. But I believe that that all has to go through legislation. And so my proposal was, is if that was something that y'all would look at possibly approving, if I went to our legislators, I do not want to, I do not want to bypass you all before I go to a legislator.
Well, I put a call in for Randy about that. What I was going to ask Randy, so you'll know. The face study, I think, is something that the county needed to do for our employees. And at the same time, I ain't trying to mock us and what we're doing, you know, we're considered part-time. And, you know, it's scheme of things, I mean, I get a check from the county, but as we know, most of us has made our livelihood outside of county government. So it's nice that we get, you know, basically what we're getting is a retirement fund, just additional retirement fund if they participate like some of us do.
Right.
But I think we've sort of pulled ourselves in there that if this says something, you know, Joyce has had bad health and I think Ryan has talked about retiring himself, and y'all been here many years. But when you leave, it goes back to that base pay. And what worries me is this. What are we going to wind up with when you guys, the filthy office shoes, and we get somebody that's making $20,000 less than what you're making?
Right.
Who's going to, who's going to, who wants it? And my concern is, I think, if we're going, if we're going to dudge ourselves into this face study for our employees, we've got to come up with some way, if you ask all the commissioners, they're fine as long as the employees gets it. So what we've got to come up with is get with the legislators to see, look at the face study and basically cross the board. I think everybody said at this table, says they don't really care about pay increase and this is fine with me too.
But you have to...
But I got, I've got to look at our full-time, y'all are full-time county employees.
Yes.
And so some way or another, it's got to be some mechanism, no different than for our regular employees that y'all work with every day, when y'all start looking at y'all over people making more money than y'all are.
Exactly.
And, and don't have the responsibility.
That's right.
So I would be on board with, I'm going to talk with Randy about it. As soon as I heard about it, and I thought about that when we were doing this, you know, some way or another, your full-time elected officials are going to have to move forward.
Well, I did some of the footwork as far as the surrounding counties that that work study used. I used those same surrounding counties. I went ahead and did those same surrounding counties that they did and reached out to each one of those individuals and they, they were happy to do that.
So you're 15, you're, how many years now, Joyce?
I'm starting my 15th year now.
15, I thought. I thought you'd been 15 years, so.
Yeah. So it's...
So in 15 years, you've invested 15 years of your life. It just, and what bothers me is if somebody comes back in, the way it's set up now in our, in our county, I mean, we've done all we're going to be able to do.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I understand.
And so going forward, what would be for full-time elected officials is my spend. And all I'm going to do is talk to our legislator about it, at what we've done, and then, you know, how are we going to keep these shoes filled?
I know that Cherokee County was one of the recent ones that passed legislation that was approved both locally and then...
Did you get there?
I, I actually have, I have access to that one. I didn't ask for it, but it was the one that was proposed based on the, the sheriff's department in Cherokee County did a pay scale. They did a raise based on the DA's pay in Cherokee County. And then the revenue commissioner piggybacked off of their probate judge pay. So that was just recently paid, was passed. So I know that that was the most recent one, and that was the one that kind of threw me, it kind of threw out of the local bit there. But it was a, just a deal that passed for the revenue commissioner and the sheriff's department. And that's why I said to you, you all know that, that things are extremely expensive right now. Whatever money you have left over in your bank account, if you're living, you know, if you're looking for that paycheck every month, it's less.
Yeah, and when we did our face study to give everybody, a lot of folks don't realize this, we had a set number that we thought we were approving.
Right.
And it turned out to be...
$350,547.
More.
Not that much more. That's the total.
Oh, that's the total. How much more was it?
It was, we was, the company told us that it was going to be about $260,000, so it's about $90,000 more.
More than that?
Yeah.
Which one you think about?
Was that on the longevity side? Was that because of longevity? I know that that was a good portion of it. In my office, it was longevity. I had some doggone meaning that were...
Yeah.
That's, personnel changes are some of that too. We think about $90,000 difference. That's to employees. So if we have two more people than we had, if we have two more people in our budget this time, I think those positions are going to be filled this year, and that can, that can account for that, right there. That's a $500 in our employee.
Your mapping and appraisals was $8,414 more in operations with $8,341.
Yeah.
Just salaries.
Yeah, that's why I said, I knew. I thought they did.
So, so, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, and I guess the step raises...
I appreciate what you're saying.
The step raises is a, I think it was a great thing for our county because that gives, well, it was talked about, the employee that's chosen every day and stays with us, you know, they need to be, you know, they need, you know, it's just so much better.
Well, it, it makes our lives easier in the administrative world if we have the same employees coming in every day and we know, I know that Dennis and Crystal can say the same thing, if you have massive turnover, that's more training. I mean, we got to start at square one if we start training with a new employee. Ryan knows this. If you start with a new employee, it's not typical for somebody to be up and running by day one. It's, it's going to take months for them to understand.
It takes over a year.
It takes over a year because the process that we go through.
Yeah, because our process changes.
Our process has changed. So that's, I appreciate what y'all did for the county employees. I was an advocate for that and I appreciate it probably more than you could know, and I am thankful for it. But I think if y'all are good, we'll move on to the next budget. I know I'm holding you way long.
I got, I still got one more question.
Okay, so right ahead.
It's new and it's totally different.
Yes, it is.
$5,000 for office equipment furniture.
Yes. So that was where I put in for a new mapping computer, those types of things. Those, the mapping computer is a server type computer. It has to have lots of memory and hold lots of those aerial photography. So her computer, I think, is either six or eight years old. We don't need to be, you know, looking at having a six or eight-year-old computer holding most important information that allows us to collect your property taxes because that's where our property taxes start. Ryan's office, she gets those deeds, and then the macro processes those deeds in our office. And so if it doesn't make its way or run or, we would be in trouble. But that's, that's where that was at. What else you got? Anything?
I don't know if you do.
All right. So on the operations budgets, maybe... The general liability insurance went up almost to, what, $2,000? Everything's going up. What are we talking about? There is an increase on both the meeting conference fees for me and the lodging and meals there too. I think maybe... I think maybe a couple hundred dollars on one line, I'm trying to see. Yeah, five hundred dollars on one line and two fifty on the other. And services, I, telephone services went up because I think I'm almost in the negative on tel-, I bet they did come up. I don't understand, but, oh, well.
So, what about your, uh, two fifty to twenty-five hundred?
Advertising?
Yeah.
It should be at two fifty, that's a typo. We do not advertise that much. Now that we go to the new tax sale, to the tax lane sale, the advertising has gone down tremendously, so we're in good shape though. Um, anything else y'all see that's popping out at you?
No, but it's just, it's weird, like you said, it's just one day.
It, yeah, it is what it is, but I mean, I, I'll work, I, y'all know I'll work with whatever you, you name, make me work with, but, um.
It's not a whole lot of money, but what about the sales service?
The what now?
The sales service.
What line is that?
That is.
Two fifty.
I thought most everybody's sale was more down.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, I, I, that's down through, I don't, I don't mess with that.
This morning, was it yesterday or this morning, we went over that?
We talked about it this morning.
Yeah, so, uh, I've got them looking, she, she's gonna work on, uh, cost, in my budget, it's sixteen hundred and fifty dollars for two phones.
That's what I said, and, and I'm looking at what, this last year, that's where I pulled that number. I, I was looking at how close we were, and I averaged out what the last two months would be, and that's.
That's the number?
Yeah.
That's the number that, that's the number that's generated here when we buy it? They just break it down on any phone we have what we're paying?
So, one less than seventy-five dollars a month.
Look at some different services then, uh, my person, so I'm building it down still. I would say my hours are going up.
And I don't know that two fifty four, uh, in, internet service line, it went down on my side, and I don't know, I need to check that line again because.
What, not two fifty, sorry, it's like two fifty four?
If there are anything like that, um, the cell phone, the cell phone lines, if you have an iPad that's connected to the internet, mine comes out of that area as well, so that may be where the business prices.
Well, that's a lot more myself.
Well, it, it would add to it, yes.
Well, the fair enough, I figured.
Well, you did have to have it out of the field, yeah, I mean, yeah.
This is, I'm gonna go through and break it down so we figure out what it is.
Yeah, you know, a thirty, thirty percent increase or a jump up there.
Okay.
Did you say you just got that up there, this past year?
Yeah, this past year, which we, we made that iPad this past year, and so, yeah.
No, it's not, it's more, but it's, it's, it's a big increase.
And, and, and I may have to go back and look at that, it may, it may, that may not, that may be out of order. So, if we'll have Lisa look at what, what I've had in that line, I'm, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not complaining about two hundred and fifty dollars, I'm just complaining about the, the.
It's a thirty-three percent increase.
Wherever department this one.
That's a big deal, right.
Uh, what about miscellaneous? I know our auditor's gonna want.
Okay, so miscellaneous also includes, um, the miscellaneous service providers. That includes us mailing out our property tax bills, and just so you know, I don't mail, I, I don't out-service everything. In fact, I only out-service our property tax bill because there's so many of them, and in the short timeframe that we have to send them out, they can get them out in, in less than a week.
So, that line, is that something, do you come up with a different code, so we don't have the word miscellaneous, we know more what it is? That's just something to make a note of, and then maybe.
I'm talking about the last four ninety nine, I don't want that.
Four ninety nine, okay. Okay, so miscellaneous other, other current. No, that is just a, that's, that's a, a number in there for whatever does it fall into there, I mean, sometimes.
I know, our auditors, though, if it goes up a substantial amount, they waste in that, I think, so I did.
Um, because you're like miscellaneous, they think it's a wide pack of, this.
I, I, I agree with that, and so you can take that off.
Can we knock it back down to what it was last year? Okay, let's do that, let's, let's change that to five hundred. It was okay with last year, so it'll be okay with this year.
But, but it's, you know, I think, because that is what yours says, is some stuff you just ain't got a line on, or you just.
You don't, we have to have it, and so.
Somewhere, I mean, we've eliminated, what, five miscellaneouses in a budget already, so we get, we're working on it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, you know, the miscellaneous service provider on one ninety nine, I wish that that was better described as well because that is for a, a service to mail out those bills, and I, I guess Ryan probably has that, where you mail out bills as well. And the, this, the postage comes from the postage line, they break it down. They tell you how much is postage, and how much is service, and how much is.
I know, I brought this up, I brought this up every year, I guess, but if we keep it for us to get a stamp machine, a postage machine?
I, I cannot, I cannot, I have bridged out, and it's so expensive for Joyce Fuller Revenue Commissioner just to send it. I mean, it's like, um, I wanna say it's twelve hundred dollars a month. Well, I mean, that's just, that's just over the top, that's almost tripling when I spend in postage. So, I'd rather have an employee put a stamp on.
Well, there is a lot of excess that goes.
There is.
You're always going over, when I have to mail out something once a month, I have quite a bit of postage to just trying to get the ounces right and everything, and.
And, and the thing with you is, you know, in Ryan's office, we probably will get it greatly, in Joyce's office, we only get thirteen percent of that, so, uh, so to try to, uh, you know, I just think maybe it's something that we got one year as a county where it could be run through ever for everybody.
If it was one that, that we could convince this, um, the, all the county administrators to come together and, and be a part of in one place, I'd be happy to add that to my budget because then, of course, it's divided amongst the agencies. But then you got to, I don't know how that would work in, in an auditor's.
Maybe something, it's just, we need, something to look at.
I think upstairs in the circuit clerk office, they have that, they have the mail service up there, and I don't know how much they send out every, every month, but I would think it's a lot.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
And this doesn't really have anything to do with it, but why can you not mail it out on a postcard?
Well, we, okay, so we did originally mail mine on postcard, and people got so mad because they couldn't find, they didn't know that they were supposed to apply for their home state exemptions, they didn't know where they could pay for their property taxes at, they didn't know, uh, so, uh, about current use. I got blasted so much about the postcards, about the postcards, uh, the first two and a half years, and I decided it wasn't worth the ten cents difference in the postcard to the, uh, the, the envelope and the return envelope that was included in it with these, these folks. So, that's why we do properly outsource the property. Now, the, the twenty-five hundred over sixty-five exemption cards that we send out, we, we mail those from the office. We do not outsource those. We do not outsource our manufactured home tax bills. We do not outsource our, uh, business personal property rendition forms. We do not outsource our business property, um, taxes. We, we keep everything else in hand, so I have those, the girls in the office working on those right now. In fact, they're working on renditions right now, getting them in envelopes. So, we don't outsource that, so we don't have any additional cost of that. The only reason I outsource our tax bills again is because we have over fifteen thousand of them, and we only have a window of about two and a half weeks to get those in envelopes and get those out to the public. And as soon as we send one out, we're gonna have fifteen hundred people come in to the office, I will pay, or what is this? You know, so we try to schedule that so that it goes out on a, a Friday, and we have some time before Monday that they, they get that in their mailboxes. Anything else? Thank y'all, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, how are you today?
Good, yeah. We're, we're a little bit behind.
I'm sorry.
It's your fault, Joyce.
I know it. You don't know I'm Baptist, right?
Sheriff, you, you.
Thank you very much.
Here's a copy I got of this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry, it really was just hers, that happened.
You're hot, see now.
This is for, this is for your workers, no?
Let somebody else go. Did you feel that, did this job?
You're not pushing the rebate. Okay, so when we get the rebate, we'll just be thinking about, oh, Sheriff, or how does that work?
Well, just go back to the general.
Yeah. Go back to the general. So, we'd be operating that money, then that's not, that's eighteen thousand, that'll be right there.
Well, we don't know how much it is, we don't, we don't know how much our rebate is, if we wanted to guess and say that we're gonna get the same thing, then we could, we could figure it out. We don't really know. To my knowledge, we don't know what we're gonna get for a rebate.
On our answer?
On that workers' comp.
Right.
And see, that, that earned me a little crazy at first because I was like, why is it so under budgeted when I could see on our salary budget worksheet that we've obviously had it more on each department's line for workers' comp that we proved that it was actually gonna cost? And it was because that discount was taken out.
Why don't we just? Why don't we just make it five thousand sixty-four, two dollars on it, and leave it at that instead of, it looks like that eighteen thousand ain't gonna create a lot of confusion. If we have to go back, if we can even remember to go back and take it back out.
Well, she put a reminder on there, so we're, we're, we're moving that one to five thousand one.
You're talking about the line?
Yeah.
The line is one twenty-five.
Oh, I know the line, but I, you just said we're gonna change it.
I'm just saying, this, this is gonna put up a thousand dollars and leave it at that.
Okay, that's okay.
And then either way it works, it'll come out, you know, if we have to add something to it, we can add something to it. But if we're gonna go back and try to take some out, you know how that works.
Yeah.
So, I'll give it exactly one thousand dollars.
You're up with that, Sheriff, we're talking about workers' comp. Yeah. I mean, if, if it was to be more than that, which I don't think it will be, I mean, we, we'll, we can go back and amend your budget and put some back in there, but I don't think we need to go to four thousand, eighteen thousand.
See, I put the, the amount that I budget for workers' comp with what we actually figure based on our percentages of what it actually costs to provide workers' comp for your department. But we always get, um, I've got a rebate back on some of that.
Because we're in the agency's area, and it's self-funded, so if they send you money, let go where it goes back to us, and always has. And if we went ahead and budgeted this in your account. Yeah.
And just wrote, it really is a big increase in your, in your budget expenses for the year if we don't include that discount. Because it was not included last time, that discount was included last time.
I mean, it's, it's a benefit, it's all figured for benefit, so.
Yes, it would, it would just roll back anyway.
Yeah, it would roll back because you can't use that.
It, 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 they, 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 they just, they, 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 they're.
I know the sheriff can't take that money, but I'm just saying, this is, this is a thousand increase, it needs to pay.
Okay.
One other thing I have more, this, uh, increase in, uh, motor vehicle repairs, after laying out of line. We just had another deal that go down this morning.
Yeah. Was it another transmission?
Yeah.
But something, but you can't find any, can't find a vehicle, the place, look at Robert.
Oh, no, oh, the state bid list is going, uh, because it seems like these, uh, the state troopers are going with F, uh, Ford or F-one-fifties, and then, uh, I don't know, but anytime to start looking at the ton, the tonder truck Ford. And I tell you what, those Ford or trucks, to me, has more room if you was, and probably better for your deputies to get around if you started just going with the F-one-fifties. Because most, I mean, I have not, I mean, I have seen this, and usually after a while, people start swapping out, but, I mean, you got some nice-looking cars, or did have, I don't know if it's still over, if it's been hauled off yet or not, but it's a nice-looking car, but the running gear is just no can.
Yeah, we're looking into Ford trucks now.
Yeah, that's.
But you can't find, can't find Tahoe and.
I don't know that you won't find one.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy a Tahoe from my, my personal view, because all the problems do add to them. I think, I think it said two fifty. Does one of us sign with?
I think, uh, what, let's just talk about for a minute, uh, for a minute. Uh, so, a two fifty is gonna take up, it's more, it's a lot more heavy vehicle, it's gonna need to follow a lot more gas. The F-one-fifty is durable, it ain't like they're gonna be pulling a trailer.
I, I like them trucks are more like an admin type vehicle, not an actual patrol.
When you look on the state bid list for law enforcement, the T-one-ninety-one L contract on the state contract.
Right.
For the Tahos, it's just a Tahoe P P V patrol rated vehicle. For the Fords, we've looked at the, it's only an F-one-fifty, but it doesn't show patrol rate. It shows S something, which they say is more.
S S V.
S S V, which is more of a, it's not rated for patrol, it's rated more for like an admin, like an investigator or chief deputy or somebody that's not gonna use it a lot. So, if we purchase those, we'll have to put them in the admin positions and then rotate their Tahos on the back.
The only other thing I see is.
So, so you can't get a Tahoe and, uh, and they don't have, so there's nothing else on the state bid list for, for police officers?
I, I didn't call the Dodge, but I mean, you know, the Rainbows, uh, God, Ford Rainbows.
This course, remember.
There ain't, I mean, ain't nothing, ain't no explorers, there ain't nothing. They quit making the sheriffly trucks, they ain't even got them on the bid list.
I emailed Brianna just to make sure, because I thought the auditor probably getting these questions from other sheriff departments. What do we do when we can't find vehicles on the state bid list? The, the dealerships are not able to get them in quick enough for all these counties that have to abide by state bids. So, I emailed Brianna, and Brianna said, you know, keep all your documentation. You have to buy something that is not on the state bid. She said, nobody else has questioned us about it, but she said she asked, not when, but not now, oh, no change. Anyway, she said, keep your paperwork, documentation of why you had to purchase because you needed one. But she said, court, don't go get all the bells and whistles. She said, get something that's a standard vehicle. She said, and you should be covered in the fact that you can't get them. And the Shetty Store has a bunch of Tahos on order, but they said it'd be February, uh, early.
February, March, and they actually cut the order, and people were calling the order for this coming year. They actually cut them fifty, I think it's fifty vehicles, so there actually be a fifty less than what they requested.
And Jonesy been this week calling like busters, calling, uh.
I've called everywhere from here to O S.
To see if they had any like standard work type vehicles that we could purchase.
Are you talking about, uh?
But I mean, they're like.
Fifty thousand, uh, close to fifty thousand.
I mean, they're ten to a thousand more dollars than.
State business.
Right.
Yeah.
The cheapest one I could find is like four, right forty-four thousand.
Massive truck.
Yeah, massive truck, just a blind, I mean, what's.
I mean, like they saying, you know, go find, if you can't document, can't find what you got, then if you can't find nothing but a F-one-fifty, why can't you buy the F-one-fifty?
Well, you could, you could.
They're not, they're not available, they're not even available.
That's not true, it's not a week.
They said it's gonna be like April before it even ever available.
Try to go over my last minutes, it's one up there, and he said two months.
Well, it is this, what about the new ball easily, I mean, if you got to buy something, anytime a woman's got twenty or thirty thousand miles like down at Ritz and Richards, and we've got some cars, and the Ford places got some cars, I mean, it's, I mean, when we're looking, when you, we can't catch y'all on a horse.
Right.
And we can't run the cars down, so, I mean, when you, they're saying document what we're gonna do, what, what can we document that they would agree to?
That's a good question. Um, she didn't really have a clear answer, but I told her, I said, y'all may be asking this question by other departments. She said, I'm always the first one to ask. But she said, I said, you know, y'all probably facing this from other law enforcement departments that just can't get it.
But, but with the one that you look for, the F-one-fifty. But, but with the one that you look for, the F-150 was a four-door?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the price on them?
Forty-eight, forty-seven.
The Ford was fifty-one. Uh, the Chevrolet, I think it Buster's was forty-eight. Forty-seven, Cooper's was forty-eight, uh, Donahue was like right around forty-five and the Chevrolet Bowhead was right at forty-five, right around there. And most of them were Chevrolets, except for others.
So how many vehicles, so, so the vehicles we got now, we're going to be able to fix the one we got right now?
Yeah.
So how many vehicles are you looking for?
Well, we just lost another one last week with a motor, uh, that's going like that motor. I checked on it yesterday. It's eight thousand dollars for a motor and the car falling worth eight thousand dollars is a fourteen.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, maybe we need to set up a committee with, uh, you know, get with everybody involved and, and see if we can find some vehicles that's got thirty, forty thousand miles and see what we can get them for.
Yeah, and I know why Cooper or other places. They, they, you know, a lot of times they rotate them off the road at sixty thousand miles or, or whatever, but it's just about going about how to buy off.
That's, that's weekend buy.
Right.
And if we're breaking some kind of rule.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't buy vehicles, but we need to. That's the American way, now, that.
Yes.
The only other thing I got is y'all requesting a vehicle. We haven't done anything on the resource officers yet. Y'all requesting three vehicles on that. Hello? If we do, if we do pass the resource officer, then that's going to give you now four vehicles. Y'all think they'll get out any less now? They don't even have enough right now. I'm down, I mean, they really don't for the road.
Well, you have, are you, are you, you got all the, have all the deputy slots filled right now?
Uh, well, we're in the process of hiring one. Uh, maybe going to the academy, but I mean, need really going to help people drive.
One of, one of the questions I have, and, and, and I haven't heard back from our attorney, I want to talk to him about. And I wouldn't hear when y'all come in and talk about it, and so I've been just trying to be filled in. One of my biggest concerns, as everybody in the room knows, the sheriff is on his own. I mean, he runs his show. And for me to come tell you or Dennis what to do, the only thing we do is apply out your budget, your dollars. Uh, so let's just say, if you did a contract with them, the county commission does, and we say we're going to put a class officer in the school. What happens when we can't fill somebody in the street and it goes unfilled? Now, they're putting in their money and there's a, and we put in our portion. Uh, who is going to be the liable that day when it's not a police officer at that school? Uh, I, and, because I, because we can't call you and say, hey, we need a deputy over today. And then you would say, well, you need to talk to the county commission because you have a contract with the county commission, not with me. So is the sheriff's going to have to be on that list, has to sign that list that he's going to commit with what the commission's going to commit. Because you see, you see where I'm playing, a couple of lot of days, you know, y'all get somebody trained and then they're in Toddiger County, so we're working more money. But what happens at the school, when we got a contract with the school, they don't want to hear that. It's like they don't want to hear about you needing a car. They don't want to hear about anything but one thing. They want a deputy there.
We told them day one that, that that was going to be the issue.
Yeah.
Trying to, trying to find somebody.
Yeah, and, and, and one of the things I've reached out, just, I'm trying, and I haven't heard back any, is I wonder if we could probably go with a, look at just maybe a security agency.
They don't have the rest hours. Uh, they don't have the alert training and all the, the training that, that needs to go along with the SRO.
Yeah, but we don't have a manpower.
Yeah.
I, I, what I'm saying is, you know, it's, it's one thing I looked at at one time was maybe taking some of the cars that just has a bad transmission and a bad motor. A lot of times when you get, you know, and place one of the vehicles there in front of our school and, and, you know, move it around a little bit. I know that sounds cheesy, but I mean, if you're going to commit armed and you see one of you guys standing around, let me tell you what, I'm going somewhere else to get, to get mean or something because they ain't going to be very happy, you know, if you see one of the county police cars pull up, sitting there in the parking lot anyway. But, uh, I'm just trying to figure out, when we sign a contract, are we going to render a service? It's not like we're rendering service cutting the right ways or building a bridge where we got it shut down and, you know, things happen, we can say, oh, well, things are happening. But when you sign a contract with somebody with me, I would call somebody after a couple of weeks and not having a deputy there. I'm going to send the county a bill for a hundred dollars an hour for me to have somebody that's certified to sit there or have some, you know, something other in place. That's the only, the biggest concern I have is we really need to make a clear understanding who's going to be responsible. And what happens, do you pull only deputy you have in the lower end of the county if one's out that day or we got a week or two? Because I also hear that, uh, that we can call the deputy and, uh, that if something's going on, we can call the deputy from the school and send you somewhere else. So we're going to be, I'm just, I, I mean, I, 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 I was just tear saying, but what I'm saying is it needs to be a clear path with the sheriff at the forefront because at the end of the day, it's going to be, you will be making all those decisions. And, and you're the one that always says, Dennis knows, always taking care of the county, the, the way of the end of the county, but I just got to have a clear path because I'm not a licensed police officer. Because I guarantee you, if there's like this, if Dennis had a problem and he knew somebody needed to be there, if he didn't have anybody, you'd see him setting up over there. And he might not have been running down, but he'd be sitting on our sheet.
I got to go.
But, but, and sometimes the presence is really important. And, and, and that's the only thing to, uh, but, and, and, and I almost have a long conversation with county attorney. I know he's got a copy of the agreement, one of the agreements, right? But that's just something that I think it's really got to look at. What if, what if we don't have two schools that's not secure for two weeks? What if? I mean, those are the what-else that I want to hear about because this is the thing, when you sign out a contract, then if something does happen, the first thing we're going to have is is a flood of these people in law service. If we're not doing what we're going, a promise that we're going to do, especially when you put it to black and white. You play, you, you, at the best of your ability, you're going to protect the county and, uh, and, and you do, you're out there in the field every day, but when you got someone that's going to be like the security guard sitting at a school. And with everything that's going on in the country right now, I hope nothing like it ever happened to Cleveland County, but a lot of those counties that we're talking about never thought it would happen in their county too.
Nobody wants to do that job anymore.
Yeah.
You can't, you, you start talking to somebody about law enforcement, that's our favorite.
Yeah, well, that's just the, the, the way the world is now. Y'all were looking at, y'all looked at as the bad guys and, uh, you know, if you don't have, if you, you go out, you go out, you can't have somebody that's going to be handing out flowers when you've got a crime going on. You got to have somebody to come in there and put that knee in their back and handcuff somebody. I, I, that's, that's just, you know, I wouldn't hear when we come to talk about it and I did talk to one of the board members, uh, just a few minutes and I'll probably get to talk to him again, but, uh, I'm just trying to, you, you know, we got to work out those issues, I believe. You know, how do you manpower three more schools and we can't manpower the county at times? And, and, and y'all trying, y'all did everything y'all tend to recruit people and y'all do a great job of train, training them, but I, I don't know how many we've trained in the past five years that are, that's still there.
A lot of them gone.
Yeah.
So mine's somewhere else.
So, uh, and, and then we talk about certified police officers, so all of a sudden you got to have three certified deputies that needs to be there today. So you're got one that's, you're feeling, it's what you just told me, it's got to go to the academy. And, and most of the academy business, a training mission riding into Harvard U or riding into Harvard with, uh, Patrick from one of these guys that we're blessed to have in our county. People just don't realize how blessed we are to have people like that at the academy because they eat one of our, couldn't go somewhere else to make their four dollars.
Not a lot.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to, when I sign something or agree to something, I'm just trying to keep my, keep the county liability situation in control and make sure this is the what-else, this is what we can do to the best of our ability. No different than when you walk out that door, you're doing it to the best of your ability. But when you put it in a piece of paper that says you're going to do it this way, if you do a contract with anyone like that, I'm going to hold you that contract. And I'm just saying, I, I believe the school will too, if we sign a contract with them. So that's, that's, that's my biggest fear. I'd love to get somebody in the school, but, uh, if, if we started today, how many months would it be before we'd have three, have a prime three, have them trained and in the school?
I've got two right now, this interest. I really, we really advertise much in the last month I gave or so.
Are they, are they, are they ready, I mean?
They're certified.
It's in that, and I was.
We just got to get them SRO certified, which is like a three-day, three-day class.
Okay.
And we're going to send somebody right out academy to do that, uh, I mean, that's, that's my plan.
And what about, what about somebody like, we got someone that's retired from the county that might want to come in and do that?
We, we, we really haven't reached out to them.
Yeah, because I thought about Terry Turner.
Yeah.
And I was going to hit him on the phone just to see if he might reach out to you at the sheriff or, and that would be, I, I don't know where Terry lives, but it would be a, a blessing to have, y'all's presence in the north end and the south end of the county. I've always said I'd love to see a police force back in Hollis, I've seen one in Hollis Cross Road and one in Frithurst because that would be a, a benefit to all of our citizens, you know. And, and, and it'd be good if they could leave the school, but the, the, that's got to be an understanding, you know, if you got something that's happened up there, we just need somebody to run there for a minute, but do they post, if they hear something going on out there, should they be shutting down the school? Uh, those are things that, uh, that we need to be to figure out. So that's, uh, and, and I think those two schools are the best, the best ones, Pleasant Road and Frithurst. The trade school, I know, you know, most of those guys out there is from sixteen to eighteen, I think, uh, in the latest. And so, uh, but I, I think it's going to be a lot of figuring on the liability and how we're going to, what happens if, you know, you can't, you can't handcuff those guys out there to, to the school. Uh, when they get ready to go to America, you're just going down to the next tent, next mailbox down the street. That's the biggest concern I have about that. Let everybody know how I felt about it.
Okay, race starting at jail?
Jail? No more questions on the?
No more questions on the officers?
There you go. I want to do the same thing on workers' comp, just change, just make it forty-nine, fourteen, just did a fifteen. Which is neither here nor there.
Do you want Michael?
Forty-nine, forty-two. Yeah, I guess it'll make a difference on the book. Altus supplies is a pretty good increase. Y'all, from seven hundred fifty to two thousand, if that's something we might trim or something y'all actually need or?
I think we just went by what we actually spent this year.
Okay.
Well. And, and the jail budget and the sheriff's budget kind of share those lines and like, we'll just take it out of the WICDA or something on the jail budget.
Okay. Uh, we didn't have anything in there last year for data process and then now this year you do, what, what's come out?
The fingerprint machine's out of working and I think we've been paying it, it's probably just coming out of a different line, I'm not certain, but, um, you know, there's several different components to the fingerprint machine and when one of them goes out of date, they go not service it and you have to purchase whatever, whatever they, that's compatible with them. So that's what that is. It's just strictly a little.
So it's going to be an ongoing lease or just parts?
It's not really a lease, it's just, we have to purchase every year when one of the parts goes out of warranty, out of date, out of service, we have to replace it. So it may be nothing this year. We actually own the equipment, but that's the, uh, more like the service contract.
Same P on internet services, and we had nothing last year.
Yeah, that key was just going by what I think has been taken out this year. Uh, and all that is paid from up here. We never even get a bill on that.
We, we, we shared it. The fiver. It, it started getting that because we never pay for just internet services. So when we updated that fiver, and it's going to be across the board, it can say it mine too. It's there, it was budgeted for zero, so that's the cost of that.
And, uh, how's the bleach, uh, on the backside of the pods? How's that hanging out back there?
Those pipes.
Yeah.
You know, we had those repaired, you know, those ones and I have a.
Is it a couple of small drips?
I have, nothing big enough I can have this. So we might have to do some more of that.
So, so that would cover the, the, there's two thousand increase in maintenance repairs, so that would be, so as far as those repairs would come out, because on, on that, we probably have to bring Kelly in to repair those areas.
Yeah.
Uh, man, Terry was down, I'm sure you all looked at it too, is those, they've got those new portable pods that they literally cut a hole in the side. Because we got two places with two pods, right? Two new pods at the jail.
Yeah, I mean, really, like if they were one, others took that by the medical.
Yeah, and I thought that's what I was talking, me and Fred were talking that day about doing one, but they just come in, especially what you're set up now. They had some of the, uh, brochures and stuff down there because sooner or later, like some of the pulleys were rotted out of their enterprett.
Yeah.
And, uh, so.
Hard to get.
Yeah, but, uh, this, it was company down there advertising when we were down there to accomplish this past couple of weeks ago, so. That might be something the jail pays off if we're probably going to have to make an investment in, back into the jail. So what I'd love to do is see a new pod built out and then look at which one's the worst to go in and see what would the investment be to, uh, if you can buy the parts and see what would be better to do, a new pod sitting on top of it or repaired the pod that's there. That would give you all free extra pods to start out going far, because all the plumbing is up to the floor. And it was fine for new pods if it, if it's, uh, works with the pods that these folks have got, it can be bought.
Yeah, there's. The sheriff's helped us make those pods different.
Whatever.
Different varieties, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any more updates on our contract medical?
No, they haven't boozed, so, like everything else. Um, I know it doesn't look like it, but that's still a pretty good deal, like I was probably fifteen years ago, some of the other quotes we got were probably twenty or thirty thousand dollars worth what we're paying now.
Uh, down, uh, miscellaneous, what, uh, is, miscellaneous, is that sort of the fifteen hundred, uh, four ninety-nine again?
Four ninety-nine.
Four ninety-nine, four ninety-nine bucks.
Yeah, we spent twelve hundred and forty-eight dollars. Now we just have to go back and look, there's just, there's just some things you have to buy, it's just.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just don't fit nowhere else.
Well, the one right, right below it, uh, building improvements, fifteen thousand. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, repairs to building and building improvements altogether, I think we're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we just left it in there from last year, uh, the same thing for, because you have to build those water pipes plus, I think we've been told we're pretty much going to have to be replacing those pod covers.
Yeah.
And I, I have no idea how much that's going to cost.
Okay.
They're just, you know, they're kind of, uh, well, we just found out this year, they're not really detention grade doors. I mean.
Yeah, we, we, we just got to listen, listen.
They're, they're kind of hollow and, and, you know, it's just after twenty years, we've had them, we've took them off one by one and sent them to welders and had them. We've done about all we can do.
Okay, so the door that you would buy would be a modified door that would be what it needs to be?
I'm going to try to call one of them that actually built them originally, if they're still in the business, and start there. Now, other than that, I don't even know. You can't go low that don't need no fire.
Oh, well, I could, I, you know, another reason I'm wondering, you know, is, is this, these folks are building these things, I don't know if they build replacement parts, you know, I know they built, they furnished the pods.
Yeah, it was a whole separate company that built the doors for the jail. So that's where I, where I was going to start with.
Okay. I, 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 I'll break that, brochures and stuff that I have and shoot them through or drop them off by you, but you just look at them and that way you're something that I can be thinking of in the future is. be thinking of in the future, is just we're getting closer and closer for the jail being paid off, two more years, right? Two more years without a day to pay for, be home sweet home.
Anything else?
I don't see anything else, I'm just talking about.
Right.
You guys have any questions, or is there something else?
Uh, Minister, do you have any question?
I think that's all we have about the, that one.
Y'all need anything from the county, Minister?
Y'all got all, y'all got everything you need, so there's information and everything, 'cause it's going forward.
Do y'all have any updates on the, uh, air conditioning, uh, stuff that y'all were applying for?
Uh, they're supposed to come, they're gonna come out and scan the core hatch. Uh, that's a process in itself to do that, but, but, uh, right after we get through with the budget, I know that we're supposed to come in and sit down and, we set aside to replace all the units in there and also to make it, uh, and the lady that I'm talking to, we'll just have to see how it goes, but I, I did the same thing when I put some in in Atlanta, 'cause you gotta bring in twenty percent outside air, so in your office, so you can't just look at, it's gonna be a five ton unit, I'm just telling you, you start bringing in that outside air, you gotta look at almost two tons to condition air that you're gonna be bringing from outside. And what that does is brings you fresh air, you know, y'all in there and y'all get sick, that's what this is supposed to limit, it's also supposed to kill the germs, so, uh, we had budgeted, there's eight units at courthouse, right Fred? Eight or nine?
Eight.
So, and I was just sort of telling her how much I felt like we had budgeted for those units. And so, until we get with the engineer that's gonna come out and engineer each unit, and it could turn out to be a lot of work, where we gotta do return ducts, it's gotta, the only way this system's gonna work, it's gotta be a ducted return, and then it runs through there and kills any kind of, uh, germs or viruses supposedly, and goes through and, and treats the air in each office.
Well, our return, you know, is in the Madden office, and I'd love to have it moved back, but it's, uh, I got an estimate the other day that it's gonna be about four thousand dollars, twenty, thirty, five hundred, four thousand, to move that return to the back of the, the office, out of the Madden.
That's, that, you, how much, you said you got a proposal to do that?
Yeah, about thirty-five to four thousand, he thought it wouldn't go more than four thousand.
To move the return?
Yeah, to move the return.
It's the whole unit?
It's the whole, the whole-
Oh, to move the whole thing, okay. Yeah, and that, and that's what we wanna do, is wait till we get that. But what my idea is, is, is I look and talking to a broker and everything and look at our ceiling lights, is to find an area that says, hey, right here, and build a platform hanging from the ceiling, and, 'cause y'all don't have no square footage anyway.
Right.
And build that thing, and then even the one up in the courthouse where it takes up another whole room and it's just issues all the way around, to try to get, look, if we're gonna do new ones, is go ahead and say, okay, this is where our power supply's gonna be, and put that, and build a platform in each office, and then instead of having it all the way to the back like in Ryan's office, he just, he sits right beside his, and then when you close the door, there's not even no return, so then you wonder why the ladies upstairs is-
Burning up.
Burning up, and, uh, so those are just things that, uh, that we'll incorporate, 'cause I think it's gonna, to try to keep the cost down, we're gonna have to probably create that pathway in the house, where we cut holes, like we talked about through those walls for our return, but it's gonna have to be, uh, it's gonna have to be a ducted return that, uh, just to buy the unit, you know, say eighteen thousand dollars, then it's gonna take another, say four or five thousand dollars probably to cut the hole and add a, 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 a pile of stuff. So, but, but, yeah, but either way, we'll do it one way or another.
All right, well, I know y'all love this stuff, it's fun, I just want y'all to know you don't have to stay. Joyce, I think you should stay.
Can we take a break?
Yeah, let's take a break, about five minutes, ten minutes. Then I think we had to leave next, but I think he had the lease, so.
Did you mention all that?
He was gonna sit down, the lease, I think it was first one.
Okay, so we just need to, uh-
I think, I might have on the list next.
We gotta go, get rid of this much call.
Y'all take a break.
I want that evidence to be guy who's dead, right?
He now, what, one-
Let's do the break.
Maintenance grounds.
So, you can get back to work, right, then you go.
Is that my real lease?
Yeah.
Whoever, just tell me who it is.
With an exam.
Okay, we'll get Chris. Okay, DM A first?
Okay, EMA, um, really the only thing that I had was just, uh, increasing in some of the utility lines and, and of course, I just based really what the expenditures were from this previous year, so, nothing.
It's ain't much, 'cause it's, it's, uh, eight thousand dollars less. We're pretty far back, we gotta let it have four good raises.
Trying to go back to the seat, um, just like I pointed out while I gave you the internet service, we, I just added three thousand dollars there and that's based off of the, um, this year's bill, because we have the fiber, um, that we share with the mountain center as well as sheriff's office. Um, this, the two fifty-five, yeah, and that cell phone and the iPad, um, that comes out of that line, and I'm always over budget, uh, because it always gets budgeted for seven hundred and twenty, so I'm always over budgeting that, uh, because of the Verizon, the extra Verizon charge for the iPad. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Questions?
Same thing on the nine-one-one budget, it, um, a little deviation from the utilities, of course, they increased the addition of the internet, um, service line. I did adjust the meeting and conference fees based on this previous year's expenditure. So, it's just, you know, the, the utilities, a slight increase in those. Um, our telephone services like two fifty-one, you know, we, we have a lot of money in phone services, so that has actually decreased since the engine project, so I adjusted that, of course, it offset on the N O A. A slightly decreased the meeting conference fees just based off previous years, um, trying to see what else, whatever down. The rest of it's pretty straightforward. Um, I did in, uh, include on, um, the last one, five thirty, a vehicle, but it is a Tahoe and sheriff's department is right, you cannot find anything, I've looked, um.
Okay, so five thirty, where it says improvements, that's actually a car?
That's a vehicle, yes.
Uh, going back up to, uh, from two seventy down, is that blank? Is there, that's going away for you?
No, that is, um, usually county admin inputs those as projections for the next year, and that's the insurances.
Okay, I, I, I just figured they just hadn't been moved over, you got that, bud?
I don't, I don't have those numbers, I can see your email address, I can-
But if they have an increase, they're probably-
I lost it.
They, honestly, they increase every year, slightly, not usually very, very much, but-
I was just making sure there's gonna be an inclusion.
I'll probably look at it, just the consistent, I don't know, if it's been ten percent, then I'll increase it ten percent or go with that.
Back to the internet services, is this something needed, we don't keep paying going over just because of the fiber?
That's correct.
Cost a criminal ton of money anytime you get out of a department.
No, it's, it's actually only the mountain center's fiber and, um, we, the, the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department piggyback off of some of our big, uh-
So, if we put, let me, so, so you've said maybe that for the service, it's three thousand dollars a year, period? And, and they just piggyback one way or the other?
No.
Or, or the total amount is more than three thousand?
The total amount is more than three thousand because it's shared among the mountain center departments.
I was saying, I was saying, if, if, I thought what she was fixing to say was-
The sheriff's department piggy, piggybacks off of their amount that is supposed to be just for them, but that is a current annual monthly charge at this, from this point going on.
You know, when we share stuff like that, it'd be nice to come up and watch the total amount of things are. We can start looking at, you know what I'm saying, if, if we got four or five things that's been shared, it's sort of hard for us to really get an idea, when you got, if, just to say there are six departments and everybody's putting in two thousand, three thousand, what is the, all I'm trying to say is what, how much is internet service for a year? You know, and that way we, that sort of metals us out as far as, okay, we understand, we're trying to pay a ten thousand dollar bill, twenty-five hundred you, twenty-five hundred here, twenty-five here, twenty-five here, we got, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's sort of what, right there?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but does it fluctuate or is it contrary?
It's, it's pretty much the same amount each, we pay for a certain amount of, it's not gigabytes, it's, um, megabytes, somebody that's smaller on the tech terms, it's, it's-
That class too? We were, we were in a class, and I tell you, we didn't, I, I, did you?
I know the sheriff's department only, I think we pay for a hundred, and I think the sheriff's department pays for like twenty-five or something like that, so. But it has big heart internet issues up here, I love it. But other than that, I really, I didn't really have anything besides, really honestly, the vehicle was the only thing that is different from the, except, with the exception of the increases in electricity.
Since nobody can get a vehicle, can we just scratch that for this year?
Whatever you want to be good with.
I don't know. Well, I think we're probably gonna find one for the sheriff's department, 'cause it's gonna be, uh, we probably, the sheriff's gonna come first getting a car, so we can't even get one, if we do get one, it's probably gonna go to the sheriff's mountain and be able to get our car.
So, if that is the case, then I'll need to adjust the maintenance, my engine line is on, as well as tires, related tires.
Can I ask you a question? I know that they're under some constraints to make Tahos from sheriff's department because they're the patrol vehicles, which is a patrol vehicle, so, um, would there be a different option than what you found?
It is, it is a different option, the thirty-seven thousand, there's a patrol vehicle and then just a, I don't know, but-
I just wondered if you could find something other than a Tahoe, 'cause those seem to be so hard to get.
I could definitely try, that particular agency didn't have anything else, but I really didn't look much into it, 'cause I didn't know.
Source sound like a new detail, is if it's standing shop or it's standing road, 'cause that was, uh, I've done replaced the front rollers on several cars three times, and it don't, it just has topped over a hundred thousand. The front rollers, I've never, I've got trucks sitting in the yard I've had for, since two thousand three, I've turned the rollers and packed and put new brakes on them, but I've completely had to, now it's a whole piece. You don't just take and buy the bearings or whatever, you gotta buy the whole roller every time you do it. And, uh, in my work life, I, I like the old stuff, just going, I'm gonna replace the hood, again.
And on this, we were just gonna use our cash, our cash.
Let's just leave it in there and see what you get out of it.
Yes.
I'll try to find, I'll try to find some options. And like I said, I only checked with Donna Ho, I think is where I checked, and they didn't have any, um, trucks, no other SUVs, but I didn't try any Ford stores anywhere else, really.
Why wouldn't we look at those Teslas?
Let's just leave them there, so we can go.
I'm good with that.
I'd say we just get a Prius.
You could leave it, no?
Now, if you need something better than that.
You do, correct, we're probably leaving on the Prius.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
That's all we need to do.
A Tesla's just like sitting down on a computer. That's what it's like, just like, I mean, you know, and you talk about them things will fly. I can't believe I liked it, huh? It's, it puts a spooky on you, 'cause when you master gas, it just takes off so fast, and then when you get up there, it's, it's, uh, trying to masturbate and get it to stop and everything, we were all hanging on wondering if we was gonna get it to stop, 'cause it's all electric, ain't like a normal, whoa, and it's like, you master gas, you're like, it's like turning on a fan, a signal fan, I mean, I'm telling you, when you turn it on, that's, once it will start turning, you're running at that speed, if you have a four, you'll masturbate. I told my son, he just needs to learn how to drive it before he puts me back in the beginning.
I, I mean, I, I'm okay with a Bronco, too, though.
What kind?
A Bronco. I'll get some water on that.
All right, you have any questions, Tom?
Yep. Thank you.
That, those Vienna sausage will be here in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up.
Ready?
Are you, you good there?
I'm good here, y'all can hear.
What page is this on?
Well, it's the new one, have you got the new one, Fred?
Yeah, it's already been changed, but I haven't, you don't have to change a copy of it, it's just what we, so we're on the new version.
One of them.
I changed some items, so.
Okay, so what page is it?
It's on page five.
Page five. My, I've been, I gotta put two eyes on it, I can't.
President already sat with me and talked to me about all these long items, so we've already made some adjustments that will be on version two of the budget, so, um, I think most of their questions or changes have already taken place when we put those in the new version.
So, if you're probably wanting to do a deeper change, Terry, you need to look at the one I gave you.
Until a comparison, that's a big thing to hold on.
Yeah.
The forty, forty-eight hundred dollars on the, uh, building improvements.
On the forty-eight hundred, uh, yeah, I mean forty-eight thousand, Fred, what did we discuss exactly on that?
Uh, we go with the engineer to look at the bank at courthouse, the parking lot's caving in, sliding down the hill. We need to do something, that's dropping the bank, keep it from a roaming public.
So, that's something I'm gonna get with him, I, you know, who is he is out there when we talk to him, we should, everybody said, so, uh, you can probably cut that sound like a man. Uh, one thing we're probably gonna need to do is I'm gonna look at having that pole relocated on that bank, 'cause I have a feeling that pole's gonna fall, don't you?
I, I talked to hell with them, they won't move it till we fix the bank.
We're, we're moving off the bank, I think, so.
Yeah, they're, they're moving down to the parking lot.
That's what I'm talking about, uh, because you got so much, I mean, when you look at, I, I meant to go last night, but I didn't, but I wanna look at what's coming off the building, to see how it is done, I really, really have a, a light down there. You know, have that light moved down there, and just swinging all the way to the backside, about four foot from that other bank, it goes off down towards the west.
Those two lights, there's only two lights that light that side of courthouse.
So, there's no lights coming off the courthouse?
Just one up under the door, on, 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 on each door.
Yeah, well, I don't know if we might look at just adding some floodlights off the courthouse, shooting out instead of shooting back.
But that's just, because you can have the building lights shining back to-
I don't know, I don't know. But I'm just saying, if, if, if it's gonna fall over, we're never gonna spend forty-eight thousand dollars, we gotta relocate the pole.
We can move the pole down to the parking lot and then put another light on the backside shining toward parking lot, glow a parking lot.
I thought you said-
And still use, um, the light shining toward courthouse, we can have two lights in the same pole.
Well, I ain't really, I, 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 that's what I'm saying, is if, if, I, I mean, I'm not, yeah, we can do both, both areas. What we're trying to do is we're two foot to pole, if we drop the pole down there, is it even gonna be affected? Because the light's gonna be right even where the cars are parked by the time, if you move that pole to the bottom, 'cause that bank's every bit a forty foot deep.
Yeah, the pole's about a little ways up the bank.
Yeah, so.
So, could we take the forty-eight thousand and do the same as what we did last year, six thousand, eight hundred?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what you had, um, the forty-eight six was what you had in your for that line.
Right.
So you're gonna change it to sixty-eight hundred?
Yeah.
Hey, did Dale and Crystal want an auto bill, does that line cover, she's got that line under, does that need change in the auto process or something like that?
Probably doesn't need change, I saw that it sounded impervious and it's not impervious.
I'll check it.
It's not impervious.
Furniture equipment, such a loan more?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm good.
You good with the loan more?
Yeah. I was afraid Terry stepped over, wanted to talk about it.
Uh, well, well, we're gonna need to talk about that in our next meeting, okay? We're good here.
Any questions anybody else?
Fred, any questions? Uh, yeah, one of the biggest things that it is that we're dealing with is it's like everybody else talking about increases on uh, like, we can move, or, you know, we can move our money around, but it's like uh, last year, I just want people to know uh, and I think this year's through Ryan's budget and everybody else, it's like, we always put thirty-five hundred in there for uh, pressure wash the courthouse and the pressure wash the jail, but last year we didn't do it, but the money's still in there. It's just something that just carries forward, if we have to pressure wash to do something, but also, uh, while he's sitting back there, are you next?
I'm next, yeah.
Well, we, uh, we put the thirty-five, was it thirty-five hundred, Fred?
Uh, it was thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah, what that's for is also a charcoal machine to, Fred, to try to do that air in the morgue and build a wall.
That's like um, four ninety-nine.
Yeah, four ninety-nine. And then I didn't weigh with some of the line items, just added a little bit to build, because it seemed like the nine hours, what gets so, like, but, and then it was always like that in the past, where you have ground services two times then up there. I don't know why it just can't be, and I, and I combined and just added a little bit to the one and that away with the one, you seen that? That, that's sort of, you know, it's sort of almost like you're trying to put it in the budget two times. Okay?
Another one?
And actually, another thing is on the cell phone services, that's what I talked with Lisa about, maybe we can, are you dealing with our cell phone? Who's doing that? Yeah, we're just looking at, maybe looking at seeing if we can get it lower across the board.
I think she said enough, the person, yeah.
Well, we got a rep that we deal with directly. And, and sometimes, you know, I, I've had, you know, working in, in the private sector, you call and start talking about, we're looking at putting our phone service out to bed, a lot of times they will just automatically say, well, hey, this is what we're offering, you might be able to knock that down, you know, because the size of dollars worth of phone calls. And which Crystal is really, she really knows about all of our, you know, our, our, usually if we have a phone problem, most time we all run to Crystal to try to figure out how to fix it. So you might wanna run it by her to see what her idea is.
Her ass is kinda homesick for, for bees and for business and stuff like that, you can't even go to Oxford and talk to them about bees.
In government, it's very terrible.
Yeah, and she, and, and I think she's got a, a direct, or.
Our rep Donna Bagley is for government, but.
She's not over there, she's not on there. It's uh, it's a guy now, I can't remember his name.
Well, we just wanna look at it, you know, across the board, and sort of, you know, everybody's trying, and I tell her to say, you know, his is over there. Looking up here.
I see all the ins and outs of your business. I don't know if I heard that, but I tried to say, this is a regular father, he's been, he's tried to set it up, and they said it was crap, and it looked like nothing. So then I went back and just so happened, the business rep was in there, he heard me, he came over and he said, you wanna deal with it? Well, just deal with me, he got straightened out, he was, Atlanta, I don't know.
So I think they feel like they don't, if you, if you talk to them that we're putting it out, it might, look, we, have a conversation with it.
Yeah, I'll contact them and see what we can do.
I don't have any time, Mark, I'm gonna be with Mr. Corner, if you can, if you're ready, I'm happy for you.
I'm pretty happy with mine, the only thing that I would like to talk about is the possibilities on getting that morgue a little bit better. I know Andy and I have talked about that. I've had, as a matter of fact, I've got a body up there right now, it's going on ten days in the morgue. Uh, and it's possibly gonna be there at least another week, if not a little bit longer. The reason on that was this truck driver, um, he was driving out of California and he died out at a Lowe's truck stop in the back of his truck. He'd been there about three days when they found him. So we gotta put him in the morgue, he's from Mexico, his family's trying to get him back to Mexico for burial. But the problem that you got there is they have to go through the Mexican consulate to get all of that taken care of. And you're looking at about a month's time on getting a body from the state back to Mexico. And where we're at right now in this particular instance is this guy, his family can't find any of the information that they need to get to the Mexican consulate. And then for them to get to airport mortuary, that's the company that I suggested that they use in getting the body transferred back to Mexico. So airport mortuary can't, can't come pick him up until they get all the written uh, documents that they need signed through the consulate's office.
On the situation where he was in a company vehicle, and he gets uh, what we're talking about, what is the obligation of that company that he's working for as far as?
Or that Mexican company?
Uh, no, actually, well, it is, but I think it is a, a reputable company, and I have talked to the, the owner of the trucking company about at least twice a week, just to kind of, them keep me up to speed where we're at, and me keep them up to speed on what we need to do. Uh, they are willing, and they're actually gonna be the ones that pays for his fees over here with airport mortuary and getting him back to Mexico, they're, they're actually paying for it. Now, as far as obligation that that company has, I don't know, you know, I don't know.
Let me ask you this, on that system, if you put a rotten egg inside that system, in the cooler, and you shut the door, do you still smell the rotten egg?
No, you don't smell the rotten egg.
Okay, that's what I thought, or the dead body?
Now, the dead body, you will start smelling it eventually, if it's, let's go back to a couple of weeks ago. We had one that we picked up and stayed in the morgue for, I think it was eleven days from the time, and he had been dead for about two weeks when we found him, so it was bad to start with.
And, and usually, that will dissipate, right? But let me ask you this, so what, and, and what we got is, is one cooler, I think we wound up paying about eight thousand for that cooler, and then, you know, which, I, I, I researched it, guided, and then come find, needed wheels put on and all this. Really true, we don't need the wheels to move the cooler, because you're pretty much stationed there, and we could add a two man, or a two person, I'm sorry, a two person cooler, they don't just put us in there. And uh, but if you, but, but what it is, is if he goes in, if he's got something like this that he finds, would it be better that we look at getting a cooler to where you got just a, a corpse from a heart attack, or corpse that, like, I mean, I've been down there, you know, when the ladies got run over with a train?
Right.
That's, I mean, to go in and try to pull, I mean, this is, you ready?
This is, this is basically what we got now, I, I found this last night, just been looking. That's basically the morgue that we got now, a three body morgue, and it's sixty-seven hundred dollars. That's with the locking door system.
That's right.
Um, so that's basically what we got now. If we had two of those, just for the simple fact of the body that we, that we had last week, a couple of weeks ago, that was in there for ten days and had been dead for two weeks. If you have somebody get killed on interstate, let's say they got, they're from South Carolina, and I've got to get that body back to a funeral home in South Carolina. When you go to stacking those bodies in there on top of each other in that load, closed up area together, you're gonna have some smell on that body there that shouldn't be there. So if you've got two coolers, and, and some people's even said a walk-in cooler, but even if that, if you've got a body in a walk-in cooler with another body across the, well, it's still gonna have the same smell.
It's bad enough as it is, I, I sort of like keeping that room. I, that's what I kept looking at, if we got one, we were probably gonna need a three door, you know, a two door.
Right, yeah, a two would be fine.
Yeah.
And I don't know, price wise, I don't think there was a whole lot of difference from what I saw.
So it'd be better to go ahead and get what we got now, but just remind, when you see that price, the wheels and all, it's more.
Yeah, and like you said, if we could, if we could get that wall built like you were talking about, and separate that off from that other room?
Well, we just approved that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're good to go there, one more cooler to where you could, a, and you don't always need another cooler.
My question is going with this, is because at one time, could we maybe do what we did with Tracy Lambert on that cooler?
That's just what I was thinking.
I know, I, when that would be the time to get it.
What's that?
Uh, we, uh, you come up, you need to come up with your complete specification on that unit, and then also, uh, any additional electrical that we need, and I don't know that we couldn't throw the charcoal in the wall in there, maybe the charcoal thing, uh, so we're gonna do, we're gonna push with that. So look at the other cooler, if you wanna go with a three cooler, we wanna go with a three cooler, with the wheels, that way we can move them out, wash and clean up, whatever we do.
Yeah.
And uh, that way that'll give you one sitting there free and clean, uh.
Just get with Lisa and, and let her deal and see if we can use IAC money.
Okay. Okay.
And let's not put it in the budget.
All right.
I don't think we can do the wall, or perhaps do the charcoal sometime too.
Yeah, get those two right there, and that, that was a lot.
Get that together.
And so, so what we're gonna do now, now, this is, because when I was talking with Fred, and when we first started on this building this, there's supposed to have been, you know, I put a exhaust, I mean, a, a, a grill, and then there's supposed to have been an exhaust blowing to the outside. And uh, and, and like I told Fred, I said, once the smell is gone, it don't keep generating smell outside the cooler.
Right.
And he, he kept arguing with me that it does.
Yeah, once you get the smell out of there, you, you, yeah.
So, so, so what I wanted to do is on that exhaust fan, and I was like, what do you mean it's blowing back into the building? And he said, well, yeah, he's that, he's that charcoal's gone, I said, no, I said, Fred, I said, the reason why we put that thing in, and, and, because I kept riding around that door when I was cutting grass down there a while back, and I'm like, where's the pipe coming out? Is it coming out the roof or what? What I wanted was, I said, change pipe running to the outside on the flap, uh, but he's also saying that uh, that we're gonna put, we've got a u, a used unit that we're gonna put in there.
A split, yeah.
And that's where, that's where it's gonna be a hundred and ten degrees in there.
Yeah.
And that's gonna.
And you know, in a lot of cases, I don't have to cooler bodies if, let's just say they're going to a funeral home in Madison. You know, I can take the body, put it in the morgue, leave it there under the air, because they're gonna be there pretty quick. We don't have to cooler every body that they get. I've just hit one of those towns here that I've had two back to back that were having holes for quite some time, and then one of them are in real ideal condition to be holding bodies, you know?
What temperature is inside that body disparate?
It stays at a constant thirty-six to thirty-seven degrees.
That's reasonable. Just like a previous, yeah, a previous.
And you can adjust it, you can adjust it up, you know, if you ever leave the door open, from the time you go in to open the door and put a body in, and you close it back, you're gonna be looking at about fifty-four degrees in just a quick second of the door being open, but it drops it right back down to thirty-six in a.
So. So.
You get over everything else?
I am, as long as y'all, you know, the only thing that, as far as my budget goes, the last line item there, four ninety-nine, the miscellaneous, that's what we're covering, transporting bodies to and from uh, Huntsville for autopsies, and all that depends on how many autopsies I have in a year's time. My first, first year, you know, we about blew that out of the water, because I had so many that had to get it.
I mean, it'd be something, if you, if you have a, a high rate of body, you just come back, we could probably.
Yeah.
Did you ever talk to the deck about body bags?
I, we talked a little bit about it, and you know, I talked to a couple of the corners, and we went to the convention about, back in April.
Yeah.
She was going to get with the deck and see what we could come up with, uh, there, but there was nothing down there from that day that we were out that really benefited us, but Lionel was gonna try to come up with something for the whole association. That's one thing that we do have now, we've got a new association director for the corner association, and she is very willing to help every corner.
So you still got two vehicles?
Yeah, still got the two vehicles. I keep them at such a funeral home and suburban at the house.
Right, okay. Well, I'm.
I'm good, y'all good?
Sure, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Well, be sure to get with Lisa about the charcoal and about another.
Okay, I'll get me first next one.
As soon as I have a pretty, just a, it ain't gotta be like down to the pennies or whatever, if I have a pretty good estimate, then I can contact that IAC and tell them what we're looking at.
Okay.
It'll take down to the penny what's way up, just for on or anything, but.
Okay, I'll get started on that.
Sounds good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
See you.
Later.
We're done?
I think I'm next.
Hey, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Maybe, I think this is a lead question, but uh, Lisa might can answer. On the appropriations under the transportation section, why don't we go from five thousand to thirty-three thousand?
Where in my page is that?
That's on the same page of the corner, nine down the bottom. I went through everything, highlighted everything I don't like. It may be a lead question, because if that lady go from seventy-one thousand to a hundred and five, that's a little ridiculous there.
Transportation, that's because, do you remember the um, the whole deal with some of that transportation cost was being covered? What was it, with CARES money or something?
Yeah, but you know, it wouldn't cost us nothing.
And it was thirty, that was thirty-three, eighty-four, thirty-three, that was the portion that the commission agreed to.
I don't think I tried, we didn't agree to do the whole thirty-three, we agreed to do like eight thousand or something, we need to go back and look at that resolution.
Okay.
But uh, because, yeah, after you said that, I remember that, that came up, then we changed it, didn't we? I think we did, to like eight thousand.
This is on what, now I'm confused.
Transportation, I learned it by. See, I would do this whole thing, just highlighted the stuff I wanted to ask questions about, and I just happened to see that at the bottom of the page. And it's really under following or leave, but I was, I.
Because, I, what are, what, from my experience, how could that comes back to us, right?
I thought this was our guy.
We have to pay part of it, I don't know the proceeds.
Which part is your?
We only agreed.
Eighty-four thirty.
Yeah.
I don't think we agreed to pay the whole thirty-three, we only agreed to pay like the eight, then when it come back, if it come back more than that, we was gonna amend it or something, so I think that was what we did in the resolution.
But the thirty-three is, is our part, right?
No, that's what they want us to pay.
Oh.
Let's just, let's just move on, we can talk about that in the work section.
Okay. You never told someone, never done?
Yeah, are you up?
I'm next.
What page are you on?
I am on three.
I think I cut yours in half.
I like none of you cuts, that's why I have to do.
My, I think my biggest increase uh, basically is uh, salaries, and then, then I asked for uh, you know, considering doing some um, on that construction, about redoing the ceiling and flooring.
Yeah, uh, are you good, now, we've got, the front half, we got it done, so we like April's and uh, who's took uh, Miss Ivy's place?
Lori.
Lori, so, so we were talking about from there back, and then, then we need, we got to do something in the vault.
Yeah.
Because that, my, when was Dad running that pipe, I asked him that they want us to stub you out a pipe core hole in that wall, because that column, you know, your fireplace is right here, but when you go back here, that column, that's where that column go, is, we've got a drainpipe in that column now. That's reason, I said, we don't think it would be, you know, to have a coffee maker, it'd been real easy to do it then, and, but, I mean, we could still do it.
The only thing is, is with the vault, you got the books and all that stuff underneath, if you ever had.
I love it.
Pulling, you could have a mess.
Well, it would be, yeah.
And that's, and, and, and it's kind of out of the way for us, you know.
Now, uh, we've got probably a hundred and something yards of the carpet blocks in the courthouse, and then we've got a beige carpet. Uh, what we can do is, is take that carpet, and then, we've got a guy, Fred's not gone, that we will call and come and lay it. But you know, then it goes back to getting Terry and, and the inmates and all of us in there to move everything out, because you've got some heavy weight in there. Because Fred was talking about cutting around it, I just need to move it clean behind it again and put it back right.
Okay.
So uh, but what I'm saying is, is that commission wants to look at that, we've got the carpet, but, but the ceiling would cost some money to put that in there. We come out a lot better, uh, I believe we come out a lot better for the quote, to do that ceiling, but what I'm saying is, until we find out about this HVAC, I wouldn't wanna replace the carpet or the HVAC, uh, or this, until we say, okay, because really, whichever one you think could have, in these units that's going in, it's really quite, again, it goes back to, it's put the unit, say, Again, it goes back to, it's put the unit, say, in Laura's place halfway in the office, and so there's your unit. And then get it in, and then we'll just run our flex off of it, run our trunk line down there, and then we'll put our drop ceiling in. Cause on top of that, you gotta buy new lights, new everything.
Well, I can label it, I think that carpet, so that carpet's been there as long as I have, or longer. I have, I'm, I've got two years and four months.
So are you good, are you good with the, with the carpet that we have?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the next person may wanna do something, I, I, I think in the long run, you probably want more like that hardwood floor we got at front of these.
But you're not gonna get a carpet till all the construction is done.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. But to say the construction will not, there's no way of getting nothing in that vault. I was just looking at, that day I was over there, cause it's all metal, and I mean, it's, just get a hold of that vault or something else. But where that was at, going down that chimney, I'm like, dang, I could put a sink there. But it, 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 I'm just, question that was asked, so what line item is, you got in there for your carpet?
It's at the bottom, five twenty-nine.
Yeah, the five eighty, five eighty-six, no, five, five twenty-nine. I'll put the software in.
I don't know why that software's down there on there. Now, my software costs went up. But this company has been a great company and has really helped.
Okay, so back up, two thirty-one, that's sixteen thousand, that's for the ceiling and the carpet.
Yeah, I would have to put a number to that. Uh, you know what I would do, Ryan's not gonna do something with it, if you just wanna leave it in there, and then I'll, we'll sort of see as we come in. Cause when we come in, we, you know, coming, uh, by the end of this year, if this lady okays us with these HVAC units, we're gonna be in the middle of this. Uh, Ryan, Joyce is not gonna be as bad, Ryan's is gonna be a little tougher for, you know, what we gotta do, so. Uh, but the thing about it is, I believe we can get the carpet, use the carpet in the building, that's really high, really good carpet that I'm talking about. We'll use the brown in your vault, and then we'll use the carpet that we use in the courtroom going through your offices.
Okay, so sixteen thousand on five twenty-nine, so what's that sixteen thousand for?
And I'm confused there, I don't, I don't know, that's, should be the same thing, I don't know.
And you got miscellaneous, bu, uh, building construction, then you got repairs, buildings, land and improvement. Part one.
Am I on the wrong side of that?
Yeah, two thirty, yeah, you got, yeah, I got twice.
So on line two thirty-one and also on line five twenty-nine.
So we can stake the five twenty-nine out.
Yeah, you only put one of them, right?
Right. I don't know why that's doubled up and why it's got a different number, you know?
That was a confusing thing. And then, back to this training deal, your notes over here in the back, are we gonna change that? Is that, see, she carried over the same notes from last year where we stopped all the training and stuff except for department heads and elected officials. So we need to actually take that out, if we're gonna allow everybody to do training?
Well, I left that in there because I didn't know if anybody wanted to remove that. I did change some of the other notes and things that I need to apply any longer.
Yeah.
Um, but I left the training in there, it's just like a guide that if we were still gonna get by the guides.
This is probably something we need to address at the work session.
Well, that.
Oh, well, well, it'd be a good question, wouldn't it?
Now, uh, yeah, that, that training that my girls go to, there's a certain fund that, that automatically goes, that, that, that takes care of that, that. You can't use it in anything but training.
I mean, I understand all that, and, and I don't mind the training, I'm just saying, what we got here.
It's gotta be worded, make sure, you know.
We need to take it out, rise first.
Yes or no?
Okay.
Yeah. So that's just, we need to, we need to address that before we pass the budget. I'm good with your budget.
And you have any, uh, any questions out there? Uh, so, some of the questions on, uh, that you might wanna ask, now elections, you got all that figured out?
I don't know.
The general.
And what she said, she said April's gonna be back next week?
Yeah.
Is it, might be gonna, April come up, sit down and go over that?
Yeah, between me and her, we'll sit down and talk about what she costs.
Okay, and then, uh, is there any of those others that we need to talk about that Ryan's sitting here that we can get direction on who to sit down? And just, and some of it, just the same thing every time, but she needs to, you know, I just wanted to know what's about.